Lead this commission, Lord, to work for the good of all people. In your holy name we ask this, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I take it you need to look at the minutes from six, nine fifteen. What's your pleasure?
Motion approved. Support.
Any discussions on minutes? With that said, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have citizens input. This would be the time if someone wishes to address the board. I take it that's your boss? All right. So if there's no one from citizens, for citizens input, let's go into petitions and communications. We have a couple of presentations. We have a recognition of the twenty-fifth anniversary of Americans with Disabilities Act. We have a gentleman, Mr. Dave Emel, correct? Just walked in. That'll be accepting it. It'll be Resolution 2015-139. Motion to receive would be in order.
Support.
Approved. Discussion? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Mr. Emel, if you'll come up down.
Can we have clerk read the resolution?
Oh, very good. Thank you.
Resolution 2015-139 by the Bay County Board of Commissioners. Hurrez, on July twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety, President George H. Bush signed into law the Americans with Disability Acts, or ADA, to ensure the civil rights of persons with disabilities. And this legislation establishes a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities. And whereas the ADA is the most comprehensive civil rights bill in its history for persons with disabilities, and whereas the ADA guarantees equal opportunity and access for disabled Americans in public and private sector services, employment, and telecommunications, and whereas the ADA has expanded opportunities for individuals with disabilities by reducing barriers, changing perceptions, and increasing their participation in community life, and whereas the full promise of ADA will only be reached if public entities remain committed in their efforts to fully implement the ADA. And whereas, Bay County has committed all resources available to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act and will continue to do so, and whereas, the twenty-fifth anniversary of the ADA is a milestone worthy of acknowledgement and celebration, therefore, be it resolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioners and the Bay County Executive, in recognition of the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, hereby reaffirm Bay County's efforts to reach full compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. And be it further resolved, Bay County Board of Commissioners and Bay County Executive hereby extend greetings and best wishes to all observing July twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen, as Americans with Disabilities Act will next day. Sign, Bernie for your chair and board.
Thank you.
Mr. Emel, I'm Don Tilly from District Six here in Bay County, and it's a great pleasure, it's a great honor to be able to present you with this award or this recognition for the twenty-five years of ADA. It's almost the anniversary of our Mike Gray, who was really a driving force in this county in bringing improvements across the amenities that we do have in this community. Three years ago, to almost, almost to this day, Mike left us, but he left a legacy that we will never forget. And anytime you go to Pinning Park and you want to take any of those trails that are ADA accessible, it brings Mike's memories to mind. And also the one, the data festival's coming up here pretty quick, and he used to drive that tractor for me. And one incredible man, so, but I have a great pleasure in giving you this recognition, this award, and thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you, Senator Joe. I would. Esteemed members of the council, or commission, and Chair, thank you. This really represents a milestone in our communities across the Great Lakes Bay region as we work collectively to impact inclusion and accessibility in full life for people with disabilities. I want to recognize all of you for the commitment that you continue to make, that you make every day in the efforts towards inclusion and accessibility. Twenty-fifth year anniversary of ADA is going to be celebrated regionally here in Bay City. Twenty-seventh of July at Winona Park will be the, in that evening, you'll get additional information about that, but many of the human service agencies that work on behalf of persons with disabilities in our community will be there to have, host a community-wide celebration. So that will be on the evening of the twenty-seventh of July at Winona Park, so we hope that all of you will join us, so, thank you, as we continue to make progress.
Thank you. Next, we have a Step Forward Michigan program, presentations from Bay County Treasurer, Rick Brzinski, Christie Smith, and Jessica Rebarde from Bay Area Housing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for giving us some time to discuss Step Forward. I want to bring the board up to date and also the people, the Bay Three TV audience, but back in two thousand and ten, the federal government made five hundred million dollars available in the state of Michigan for an artist hit program for people struggling with mortgage foreclosures and helping to bring them current and keep them in their houses. About two years ago, a group of Michigan County Treasurers lobbying with MISHDA, and I think the federal government also encouraged some of those funds for people struggling to pay their taxes, the line for taxes, because they had the same result, they couldn't pay their taxes, they'd lose their house just like mortgage holders. Most people think everybody has a mortgage, but everybody doesn't. There's land contracts, there's people that inherit their houses from families, there's all kinds of situations, so there are a lot of properties where banks are involved trying to tax pay. So when this started, it was through Michigan State Housing Development Authority, and the application process is about twenty screens on the internet, and like a mortgage, any other program, a lot of paperwork. So I knew immediately that a lot of the people who have a hard time dealing with that and Bay Area Housing stepped up and volunteered to help people to get through this process. Jessica Rebarde and another person at Bay Area Housing spent a lot of time helping people get through this process. Statewide, there's been nine thousand taxpayers received over sixty million dollars. In Bay County, we had ninety taxpayers get three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, so we probably got close to a fair share of the total. And again, it was through Bay Area Housing that drove this a lot. And then recently, Holly Kukla, Deputy Treasurer, was at a family function and was talking to a lady and asked what she did, and she said, oh, I do some programming, probably never heard of, it's called Step Forward. I said, Step Forward, we do that all day, every day. Christie Smith works for the Human Development Commission, and she's been instrumental, working in LaPierre and Tuscula here on the Sanlance County, and she's also offered her services to come help Bay County. There's fifty million dollars left statewide, first come, first served, and like I said, this is a very intensive process to get through, so any help can be greatly appreciated. So I asked both of them to come today, maybe give you a brief discussion of what they do and how we can get more taxpayers in Bay County to receive those funds.
Very good.
Jessica?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. We have our application package actually available right online, so it's easy enough to get. It helps with, you don't even have to be delinquent yet when it comes to the mortgage piece, it can be current, it can be underwater in your homes, that kind of thing, if you have a one-time hardship, there are funds out there. It's a forgivable loan, actually, it's forgivable over five years, as long as you stay in the home, so it's kind of like it never even happened, and it's up to thirty thousand dollars that they can help you, as long as you have your qualifying hardship there. You can just call the office or come get the application online, and we can help look at it with you, and if Step Forward isn't the only answer, there are other alternatives out there that we can help discuss with everybody, too. So as long as it's your primary residence, that's a big thing, it has to be your home you live in now.
When you say come to the office, where's the office located?
Our office is at one fourteen Washington Avenue, down on Washington at Columbus, or you can just call in, it's nine eight nine six eight six six eight zero zero.
Mr. Lutz.
I just wanted you to explain, like, the minimum requirements of somebody wanting to apply.
You have to, you do have to have some income coming into the home. Some of the qualifying hardships are like if you suffered a reduction of income or unemployment, things like that, medical, even having to have major home or car repairs, those can help you qualify. If it took that money out of your budget for the month or a couple of months that you couldn't make it, they'll help you get caught back up and make sure you get back on your way. You do, again, have to live there, it's your primary residence, have some income, it has to be sustainable, it has to make sense that you'll be able to stay there after they help you.
Commissioner Coonan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is this money, Mr. Rebarde, in addition to the money that is annually allocated for folks that need repairs, whether they're emergency or long-range repairs, or can you tie both together as somebody?
It's absolutely separate. Our other programs, you mean at Bay Area Housing, how we help with emergencies and things that we do, you have to be current in order to qualify for any of those repairs on the housing side. So us on the education and counseling side, we help with the mortgage pieces, it's not actually funds that we ever touch, we're only helping with applications. We help make the phone calls back and forth between Step Forward and the lenders and things, and just make sure it's a smooth process with faxing things, and making sure complete application package is sent right away, so you don't get pushed to the back of the line type of a thing. So we would go first, we could try and help with their mortgage and tax payments, and then the money that's allocated for the repairs and things is totally separate. To come to one side and then we just kind of send them across the room.
So they can stop in and maybe they follow by people?
Absolutely, absolutely, they could qualify for both.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, you said that you folks are, that will help screen, and they may be eligible for more than one program just by going, there's, I'm sure that you get people that don't even know the call number until they get there and find out what to do after they get there, and, you know, because I think it's important for the, like, the people in the county, you know, and anywhere, that they, I'm sure they take advantage of these programs that are there to help them out, but especially, if they're not sure if they qualify to come in and see you folks and see what you can do for them.
Yes, they should have, there are no income limits on our side either for the education and the counseling pieces, so as long as you have that little bit of money to make sure that you can stay there, there are no limits as high as we can help people either.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else for Jessica? Jessica, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Christie.
Hi, thank you for your time. I do exactly what she does, but I do it for four counties. I was invited to Bay County to help assist in the applications for Step Forward. We do not require your persons to travel to our counties. We will be temporarily in setting up shop at the Treasurer's Office, and some details to be worked out, so that your persons that you send to us can be served in your county. Our programs are not county-driven, we are a state program, all our funds come from MISHDA, so of course, we are just taping and helping with your county. I'm originally from Bay County, if that matters, so.
That's always a plus.
Yeah, so if anyone has other questions, the one thing I'd really like you to know is you don't have to know how the process works, you just really have to know where to send the people, that's half the step, because we don't do what you do for Libby, we do what we do so that people can get even food stamps, a lot of people don't have internet, and the applications are all done online and in very detail. Our job is to make sure they're done correctly, so that it speeds up the process and helps persons get what they need, so.
Christie, Commissioner Coonan's got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So you're going to have an office in the Treasurer's Office at some point?
Somewhere in the building.
But right now, you can service the people at one fourteen Washington?
No, that's not true. We are still located in Tuscula County, which would be closest to you. We're going to travel here when Holly gets back, we're working out some details, so that you're, anyone that visit needs additional help, we can service them here in Bay County.
Okay, additional, other than the, what's that?
Bay Area Housing.
The Step Forward program?
Correct, yeah.
So you're with the Step Forward?
No, I'm with the Human Development Commission. I do Step Forward applications out of our agency, which is four counties. But again, it's a state program, there's no territories, so whoever needs Step Forward help, we're going to assist in those applications online. We just currently don't have any facilities here in Bay County.
Let me ask you this.
Sure.
If somebody goes tomorrow for Step Forward, can they go to one fourteen Washington, or do they have to wait till you get an office?
Oh, they, they function every day.
All right.
Correct, two separate offices. We're right here in Bay County, Big Midland, Airnet, and Saginaw, excuse me, Saginaw, where she, hers, or she lives, it's down a little more, never been worked together.
If somebody were to go tomorrow, they could go?
Where they have to.
Very good. Commissioner Beget.
I'm representative to the New Michigan Community Action Agency Board, and I know there's some MISHDA money, and you work with them for rapid rehousing and a lot of housing programs also, so I just want to let people know that, you know, that Mid Michigan Community Action, which is Bay County also, and Claire, you know, have helped with housing and, and I think with some of the more repayment and stuff like that, too.
We have other funds, too, through homeless coalitions and things like that. Step Forward is the best product, because we can cure the whole problem, but we also look at budgets to show continued affordability. Our job as a housing counselor is very detailed and specific, because some people, I'm sorry, cannot stay in their homes, and that's where we talk about rapid, rapid rehousing and things like that. Again, that's what we do, and so that people understand it's okay to leave, and of course, it's not our primary focus, but our goal is to keep everyone in their house, so.
Very good. Anyone else? Appreciate the enthusiasm, you must like what you do, right?
My wife's got yours.
All right. Thank you so very much.
All right, thank you very much.
A motion to receive would be in order?
Motion, support.
Any discussion? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on now to appointments to the Bay County Land Bank Authority. This is with a recommendation from Mr. Brzinski. We have Richard Finn as a local government representative through October twenty seventeen, replacing Terry Watson, and we have Richard Burns, a local government representative through October twenty sixteen, replacing Mr. Tacey.
Support.
Questions? Commissioner Tilly.
More of a statement, a statement of anything, I do want to commend Rick for appointing Rick Finn to our, to this board, appointing Rick Finn to this Land Bank Authority, because it's another sign of collaboration that needs to happen within our community, and I think Rick being on that board would be a tremendous asset to the Land Bank Authority, and I think to this, these efforts that we'll, we are undertaking as we proceed forward as a community, so, thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move into C. Chief Circuit Judge has a reappointment of Corinne Martin to a six-year term on the Bay County Jury Commission.
Support.
Discussion? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move in now to reports and resolutions of committees. We'll start with Ways and Means and Commissioner Coonan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. From the Ways and Means Committee, we have Resolution two thousand fifteen dash one forty. This is a temporary secretary for the clerk's office, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Two thousand fifteen dash one forty-one, Kirjam, Samansky Drain Project Agreement with the Drain Commissioner, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution two thousand fifteen dash one forty-two, Region Seven, Area Agency on Aging, it's the annual implementation plan, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution two thousand fifteen dash one forty-three, support for Region Seven, funding for the Golden Horizons and the Lake Shore Legal Aid, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution two thousand fifteen dash one forty-four, work process, work flow study, county, for the clerk's office, to corporation counsel, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? Commissioner Beget.
I spoke against this last week, and, you know, if, if I thought this was going to resolve the problem, I'd probably be voting for it, but I don't think it's going to resolve the problem, it's still going to probably lead to litigation. We also are asking for an outside opinion about conflict of interest. It's pretty obvious there's a conflict if the clerk is suing the commission, that there's going to be a conflict, or we have a legal counsel representing, you know, can't represent both sides, so I'm sure that's going to come out, that'll be more expense. I just spent three hours with a lawyer at a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour, so, you know, we're talking about expenses on both sides doubling, and I wish we could resolve this without going to litigation, so I would encourage administration and the commission to work with the clerk to resolve this, whatever way we can. I'm not sure the study's going to resolve it, and so I'm going to vote against it.
Just, just to give you a little more information, there's been discussion with, with the county exec on looking at the possibility of doing the same on, on some other different departments to see where we're at, especially with us now going into our next step with technology the way that it is. So it isn't just the clerk's office that we're going to be looking at, I believe that, Tom, there was discussion of looking into other possibilities. Go ahead, Tom.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do plan on including in our two thousand sixteen budget funding to do additional reviews in Act one thirty-nine departments, as well as any of the other offices that are identified as priority. We think it will result in better operations if we go through that kind of process. It's a very standard approach that is done in the private sector, and Tim Quinn and his experience has really helped us as we've gone forward in the last couple of years, and we want to keep doing that.
And I would say if, if the results come back showing that there's deficiencies in any department, that the board would sign on to get what helps needed, but until we do that, we really don't have a good handle on it, and it's unfortunate that we've had some people in the clerk's office either retire or have a, an incident where she's not available to work, so it really puts her behind the gun, so I acknowledge that. Mr. Herrick, did you have a question?
Yes, I just want to, I would just want to, I don't want to disappoint you, but I know that, you know, that the board has, has taken great strides over the last few years, you know, to, to save money and to make things, streamline things, and I think, you know, that maybe this comes to the time, and I talked about this last week, we come to the point of cut to inefficiency, and, and maybe that's there, and I think what Mr. Hickman just talked about, you know, to do, to look at some of the departments also, not just the clerk's office, but maybe they'll find out they actually do need more help, because, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a point in there where, you know, where it just, it doesn't work anymore, you know, you cut, 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 then you got to find out, then you got to start add, 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 and, and that may be where we're at, but at least we'll have an idea and find out this way. That's, that's my whole take on this, this whole workflow study.
Okay. Commissioner Coonan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's been other studies as well through the state, and they're looking at reducing judgeships and, in the county, not just this county, other counties, so that's not the only department that is being reviewed to see if, what the workflow is, what types of employees they have, or does, do we need to be able to reduce somebody? So it's being done elsewhere, this is not just selecting a particular department and going after a particular department, it's being done all over.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, Amber?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There is just one point that I wanted to clarify. The outside counsel that I've retained has not been retained to determine whether or not there's a conflict. I'm not in disagreement with the fact that if litigation ensues, that there would be a conflict. Our purpose at this point in time in retaining any particular company to do the evaluation or an attorney is to avoid the necessity of litigation and determine whether or not litigation would be reasonable or necessary.
Okay. Commissioner Beget.
Just emphasize that it's taxpayers' money that we're going to be spending for these lawyers, it's going to be two times whatever we spend, and it adds up real quick, and I don't think the public wants us to do that, so whatever we can do internally to resolve this, I would urge us to do as best we can.
Commissioner Coonan.
Monitor the ADA's taxpayers' money, too, we always voted to support that, to keep the taxes and monitor, not come back to the general fund, so either with it, or, you know, you can't be on, on both sides of the coin, either on one or the other.
Okay. Anyone else? With that being said, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Very good. Thank you.
Resolution two thousand fifteen dash one forty-five, Leica GS fourteen, MSRN, over purchase from the Drain Office for a remonumentation program, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution two thousand fifteen dash one forty-six, Remonumentation Peer Review Group for the two thousand fifteen, this is the Drain Office and the remonumentation program, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution two thousand fifteen dash one forty-seven, the addition of Iosco County to the next generation nine-one-one phone system. This is an intergovernmental agreement for nine-one-one and central dispatch, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution two thousand fifteen dash one forty-eight, Bay Alerts, this is RAVE, Service Agreement Through Emergency Management, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? Commissioner Tilly.
Ryan, I knew you were in the paper, ordered it, saying that the text service is going to be down, you could just reaffirm to the public, how long is the texting going to be down, but when do you expect it to be back up and through?
Sure, thank you, Commissioner. Ryan is Emergency Management Coordinator. We're expecting a very quick turnaround on this, we're anticipating end of August, first part of September, it'll be back up. Were you hoping for no major emergencies in that period? Correct, yes.
Anyone else, questions? Commissioner Lutz.
What are your rights for going down?
It's down and out, yes.
Thank you. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution two thousand fifteen dash one forty-nine, this is the GIS web view service, Amalgam LLC, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution two thousand fifteen dash one fifty, Memorandum of Understanding with Bay City Area Transportation Study, that's PKX and Bay Metropolitan Transit, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution two thousand fifteen dash one fifty-one, ECA Reporting Requirements, Personnel Department, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution two thousand fifteen dash one fifty-two, this is a waiver of the Personnel Department for payout for sick leave and vacation for employing the clerk's office, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution two thousand fifteen dash one fifty-three, Safety and Securities RAP Grant Application for MMRMA Administrative Services, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution two thousand fifteen dash one fifty-four, waiver of the fee for the fairgrounds for McLaren, Bay Medical Foundation fundraiser, fundraiser, recreation and facilities, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution two thousand fifteen dash one fifty- Resolution 2015-155, Civic Arena User Fee Increase, Recreation and Facilities. I move this resolution. Support.
Discussions. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-156, Acceptance of Bay Area Community Foundation Grant for Community Health Assessment for the Health Department. I move this resolution. For it.
Discussions. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-157, Budget Stabilization Fund, Finance Department. I move this resolution. Support.
Discussions. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-158, Payables, General Bayonet, Center Ridge Arms. I move this resolution. Support.
Discussions. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-159, Budget, Budget Adjustments for the Division on Aging and the Sheriff's Department. I move this resolution. Support.
Discussions. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-160, this is a CISMA Memorandum of Understanding of Invasive Species Grant, Environmental Affairs. I move this resolution. Support.
Discussions. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that's all the business from Ways and Means.
Thank you, Commissioner Coonan. We'll move into person, personnel, human services. That would be Commissioner Lutz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, I bring a resolution 2015-161, which is for vacancies in the Division on Aging from the Personnel Department. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-162, is the Asset Recovery and Management Services Contract with Parnage Corrections for the Sheriff's Department. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussions. With no discussions. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number 2015-163, Title V Agreements with Region Seven, Area Agency for the Division on Aging. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussions. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2015-164, which is a memorandum of agreement for Medicare/Medicaid Assistance Program for the Division on Aging. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussions. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And that's all that Personnel and Human Services has for today.
Thank you, Commissioner Lutz. We'll move into the Board of Commissioners. That would be Don Tilly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Resolution 2015-165, report to the county executive. I so move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes business from the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tilly. We'll move on to reports of county officials. Mr. Hickner.
I don't have anything to report.
Nothing to report?
I haven't either.
Actually, I, I do have a question for you. There was an email that was sent out that kind of encapsulated the activity on Fourth of July. I don't know if, if you all had an opportunity to see what our city looked like and what it all came together. It was a aerial visual picture. I think it lasts maybe 90 seconds. If you haven't had the opportunity to look at it, you should. And if it's something that can be made available to the public, they should also. I think Bay County should be very proud of, of what we've been able to do. And we owe tons of gratitude to the individuals that put on that fireworks display. I mean, they're second to best. It's, it is one of the best ever. So unfinished business. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Miscellaneous?
Mr. Chairman.
Whoop, let's see. Mike Duranchik. He has more hair than you.
Thank you. A couple of weeks ago, Commissioner Harry and I had the pleasure of going to like a pre-open house at the water plant and, at the new water plant. And it was very, very impressive. And I would urge, I'm sure they're going to have another open house or whatever, but the workmanship, the skilled labor and everything there was, it was really something to see. So.
That is a major accomplishment.
That's a major accomplishment to pull that many entities, entities from Bay County. Everybody's, you know, playing the game except for one. So that's pretty good.
Yeah. When you think about the years that went by trying to make that happen, Bob Redmond, I think, was still in high school. It was a long time ago.
That was in high school a long time.
So that's right.
Yeah.
If you, if there is an opportunity to go through that, that facility, it is pretty cool.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Tilly.
Just to administration, I don't know who to direct us to, but in discussions with some folks at the adult, at the care facility, that, this comes from the chief of maintenance out there, is that he's interested in, I guess the care facility may be interested in maybe some of the residents doing the flower boxes on the golf course. That, is there a potential to, because they need things to do, many of the residents, and it's something that they could potentially do. And I don't know who you direct us to and who has to talk to whom, probably Kristen and Brent and Gary, but at the end of the day. But I, it sounds like a cool idea. And it'd be something, I know we're shorthanded at the golf course anyways. And if there's some way that we get other individuals to be invested in, into that piece of property, it just makes it a better place to, to have in our community. Just food for thought.
Great idea. Maybe Kristen, do you can come back to us and let us know what, what the legalities would be in liability?
Sure, absolutely.
Very good. Anyone else under miscellaneous? Commissioner Beget.
Along the lines, I was out at the golf course Saturday, had to visit somebody else there. And they were sort of asking him what, what they needed. They said they needed more carts. I know we've heard that before. And I know we tried to buy some. But if we can find some carts that aren't too expensive, they would like more carts because they run out of carts when they have some of the leagues out there.
I believe that might be on Kristen's top list, the top 10 things that she's working on. So Commissioner Coonan.
Well, we'll have an opportunity this year to fund new carts if we so choose right here. So if it's something that you want, something that they need, then just bring it to us and we'll, we'll fund it. We're the, we're the funding mechanism around here.
Very good. No one else in miscellaneous? We'll go to announcements. I've got a few of them. In October, Land Bank Authority, it's one at large representative. It's a three-year term. We also have in October, Department of Health and Human Services Board of Directors. It's a one, three-year term. We also have Board of Canvassers. It's two four-year terms. And those are actually appointed by both the Democratic and Republic Party. That's coming up. In November, we have a Building Authority. It's a two six-year terms. In December, Division on Aging Advisory Committee. They're four two-year terms. And that would be districts one, three, five, and seven. Okay? And Amber, is there a need for closed session?
There is not, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Then, Mr. Tilly, what would be in order?
Motion to adjourn. Support.
I'm going to throw it to the man with the beard.
Any discussions? With none. We are adjourned.